All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started for our work session. And at this time, Dr. Buck, if you'll bring up our first presenter.
We have two items, and first will be Dr. Shelton updating you on their CFMP process. And he has a guest from our consultant.
I do, I do. I'm happy to introduce Corey from Link, and we're gonna make our presentation or update.
I don't mean to be rude. Do we need to adopt the agenda?
Yes, and that's not being ruled. My computer is just blank, and so, yes, thank you for making us back up.
Before we start, I apologize.
Next item for agenda is 1.02, adoption of the agenda.
Thanks. I'm going to adopt the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, everyone raise your hand. Say hi.
Hi.
All right, now to pose. Thank you.
Next item is 2.01, comprehensive facility master plan.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for this opportunity. We have enjoyed the process of gathering many, many stakeholders in our community together to bring together the next chapter, the next chapter of the comprehensive facility master plan. And this is truly a story. This story began in 2011-12 with the comprehensive facility master plan process. That process was driven by 23 questions that focused on program need, facility needs, safety needs, and those questions and the responses to those questions then drove the projects and the work that was done at that time. Then in 2018 and 19, we wrote the next chapter in this story, and it focused on the student impact, student and staff impact, and how space impacts student learning and teaching. Through that process, we developed the portrait of a graduate, and then also then worked in to how space impacts learning and went down the direction of the future-ready learning spaces, which you see lived out in the 2020 bond, where we have Mason Elementary, we have the middle school renovations, upgrades, and the build there at East Trails Middle School, Lee Summit High School, the athletic facilities, Miller Park, of course, geometry and construction, robotics, Paradise Park, and then a lot of focus on safety and security. But the the foundation of the work that was done in 2020 bond projects was the future-ready learning spaces. You may recall about a year ago, I presented to the board in a work session, a 20-year bond cycle that has four phases, the 2025, 30, 35, and 40. To systematically ensure that we get all buildings up to that standard that we outlined in the 2018-19 CFMP process, we built this schedule, and the schedule was built on need. The nine buildings that are listed here in the 2025 bond were the buildings that we felt had the most need and needed to be addressed first. And so those buildings who are slated for 2025 and are highly engaged, and we'll talk about that here in just a moment, in this process leading up to the 2025 bond. You're gonna notice a lot of other needs on this list as well, but in regards to the night's conversation, we're gonna focus on those nine buildings. So what's driving our work this year is the charter that was developed, and you have a link that'll take you to that charter. But we are working to develop what we need to do and when we need to do it in these three areas, what we're calling three buckets. Capital, major improvements and renovations, think bond projects, think big things that need to be done. Capital maintenance and repair, think roofs, HVAC systems, parking lots, doors, windows, those things that we do on a regular basis that require capital expenditures. And then capital equipment, think kilns, grand pianos, laves and industrial tech classrooms. So as we build out our plan for the 2025 bond cycle, we're thinking not just about major renovations and improvements, but also that maintenance and repair, those capital equipment needs that we're gonna have over the next five to seven years.
Dr. Shelton, while you're going, this is a PDF, so that link is not live for them. So in our next update, a second deliverable for us, can we put the link to the 23-24 CFMP charter?
Definitely.
Thank you.
The district team is made up of 52 individuals. I mentioned we have a large number of people around the district working both at the district level, but also at these nine buildings. Fifty-two members, 32 of the members have attended at least two meetings. We have 24 ex officio members. Eighteen of those ex officio members have attended at least two many meetings. We have multiple facilitators leading this session, these sessions. And these individuals were selected through a community and district-wide survey, and we looked for individuals who had past involvement, also why they wanted to be on this committee and why they want to participate, and then what qualities and skills they possess that they thought they could contribute and provide extra value to this team. The buildings that we, once again, are focusing on, these nine buildings that are listed here, each of those building teams had about 10 to 20 individuals, kind of a similar process in how we selected who serve on these teams. And once again, the goal of this team, and they're really getting down into the weeds, what we're gonna do, when we're gonna do it in regards to these major renovations and improvements at these nine buildings, maintenance and repair, and also capital equipment. The district teams has met, we've got six meetings scheduled. We've met three times already. Our next meeting is December 12th. You can see meeting one, gain understanding of the current landscape and future plans and past processes. Meeting two, reports from building-level focus groups, as well as review district priorities, survey results. We had over 3,000 survey responses from our district-wide survey, and Corey's gonna go into that here in just a little bit. Meeting three, prepare for this update, but also we got into the finances. Joe Kinder from Steeple and Mr. Holder spoke about how we generate funds and revenue sources for capital projects. Meeting four in December, we're gonna have the final report from the building-level teams, and we'll talk about that here in just a moment. But they're gonna, in December, each team from the building is going to send two or three representatives, and they're gonna present their prioritized list of the things that they believe need to be done at the building. The job of the district-level team at that meeting is just to ensure that the wants and needs that the buildings are bringing forward are in line with the overall district goals of having future-ready learning spaces and the goals that we want to see as a district implemented. Meeting five in January, once again prioritize and rank our final district list, if you will. And then, as we move into February, we're gonna prepare our recommendations. And actually, it's more a presentation to the board than a recommendation to the board. The next step in this process actually will be taking the work that's been done, both at the district level and at the building level, to the Citizens Advisory Committee and ask them to kind of wash through it and give us another lens, another set of eyes on this work, because it's very important. This comprehensive facility master plan has to represent the needs of both at the building level, the district level, and the community level. The work we do encompasses the entire school district. The building teams, as I've mentioned, have met three times. First meeting was during the weeks of September 25th, understand our current need. By the end of the meeting, the team needs a sense of all the issues and maintenance and repairs. And so we studied and looked at a lot of data for each of the buildings. Meeting two was the week of October 16th. They kind of present and sort and think about what those needs are and what the solutions to those needs are. At this point, we're starting to bring in our architects, and they're starting to listen to what the group is saying, so that they start thinking about getting to the design phase. Architects have a nice foundation, understanding of kind of where the minds of this team is. And it's not, what this team does is a starting spot, if you will. It's kind of a, they're gonna kind of tear everything up, because the next step in this process eventually is for those design teams at each building, which will involve community members as well from those attendance areas, to sit with the architects. Meeting three, which are the meetings we're having this week, present the survey data, because we did survey the attendance areas for each of these attendance areas, and looking at that data from those surveys. But then really getting down to what do we want to do, when do we want to do it, and what does this team, that this team feel like are the priorities at each of these buildings? Yes, please.
Excellent. Hi, everyone. My name's Corey Behrman. I'm a project director with Link Strategic Partners and directing the facilitation team at each of the nine buildings, as well as with the district-level CFMP group. I do want to return really quickly to the district team meetings and just point out that in meeting number two, the CFMP group paired off, so there were groups of two, and they went through each of the 3,000 comments that were offered to the survey, the district-wide survey. And then they had an exercise at the end where they created the key themes that you're gonna see here tonight. So there's a lot of work that went into reading and processing every single comment. I also want to point out with the building team meetings, we met with nine schools each of these three weeks, and you know, the nine priority buildings for Phase One. Those buildings this week finalized their list of priorities. Each of the nine came up with their finalized list, and that is the list that we'll be prepared for that meeting on December 12th with the district team. And two group members from each school will present with the principal to that team. All right, going into district themes. So these are the themes that cropped up during the survey, that have cropped up during the conversations with the district CFMP group. One of the things you'll notice on the next screen when I go through the building-level themes is that there's a lot of overlap between what's coming up at a district-wide level and what's coming up at each of these buildings. So first of all, more classroom space. This is future-ready learning space. This is, in some schools, ensuring a classroom for every teacher. In some schools, it's ensuring more special program space. So this takes different forms in different buildings, but overall, more classroom space is a request across the board. Outdoor classroom space and renovating courtyard space, bus and parking traffic flow, especially as it relates to potential choke points where cars and buses might interact as they're going through the exterior structure. ADA accessibility, so there are different areas where accessibility may be an issue, correcting for those, particularly at entrances to buildings. And then athletic facilities, this is upgrading turf especially came up a lot, as well as in certain places, either expanding gymnasiums, or in the case of Lee Summit North, possibly expanding the fieldhouse to accommodate more students, as well as additional fields, practice fields. Repairs and maintenance, cosmetic upgrades and landscaping came up. Collaborative spaces, both for teachers and for students. HVAC, electrical, roofing, plumbing, all very basic infrastructure items that need to be taken care of in order to ensure that the items that are under those major renovations and the capital equipment are safe and protected. Accessibility, as we mentioned, is another concern just even beyond ADA. How is the building experience when you're walking into the building, et cetera? Sidewalk and crosswalk maintenance, making sure everybody's safe, as well as potentially adding covered walkways in certain areas so that when folks are going in during inclement weather, they're safe, protected, and comfortable. Teacher space, so this would be teacher lounges, possibly expanding or adding teacher lounges, ensuring that every school has a nursing mother's room, and possibly adding some bathrooms to some teacher lounges. Bathrooms was again a common theme. In particular, this is at the lower grade levels, looking at the single-stall bathrooms that are in each classroom and making sure that those are fully upgraded. And then, as you rise up in grade level, talking about common restrooms, particularly locations in buildings where common restrooms might be a really helpful thing to have, for example, near locker rooms. So, or near entrance and exits to practice fields. Excellent. Technology, this is making sure that the technology is in the classroom for the future-ready learning spaces. In particular, flexible learning equipment, so this is ensuring those classroom spaces are equipped with the right furniture for collaborative, for collaborative learning. Playground equipment, this is making sure that all playground equipment is upgraded and to district standard. Cafeteria furniture, in particular, when you've got a cafeteria that often needs to be set up and taken down, making sure that those all-in-one tables are an option, so that the space can be cleared quickly without a lot of staff time. And then storage came up, both from a classroom standpoint, as well as from an overall building standpoint. There are some elementary schools that are using hallway space for storage, where additional classroom storage might be helpful and would aid in traffic flow and sightlines and that sort of thing. In the other category, we put safety and security here, and we've italicized it, particularly because safety and security really applies to all three areas, right? It's an overarching consideration, ensuring that all of these areas, as they get developed, are meeting district standards for safety and security. Each building additionally, you'll see on the next slide, has specific concerns related to safety and security that might require specific upgrades at those facilities. And then the rest of that other category is mostly programmatic elements that came up in the survey, and some of the key themes around those things that might not necessarily relate to the CFMP, but are still really important to note as we go through our work. All right, at the building level, so this is the, these are the themes that are coming out of the building-level focus groups that we've had, the three meetings. Those three meetings and meeting number one, as Dr. Shelton mentioned, we created a sort of dream wishlist of all of the wants and needs that the facility has, both from a staff perspective, from what parents have seen, in the case of Lee Summit North, what students have seen, and same thing at MIC, and making those, making sort of a big list of priorities. From there, we narrowed that down during the second meeting into key themes that would cover all of those areas, right? A lot of those needs and wants are very specific needs and wants that might be encompassed in, say, a full classroom renovation, for instance. So bringing those to bear, so that we could create a prioritization exercise that the group went through during meeting number two, to create that, or to start to rank that list of priorities. And then, that same prioritization survey was shared with the building staff. Staff had an opportunity at each building to take that survey and provide their priorities. A lot of the priorities of staff overall aligned with what the group had come up with, so it was really nice to see. Additionally, an overarching sort of community survey went to each building with two open-ended questions to try to collect any ideas that we might have missed in the initial two meetings. And so those comments were then leveraged during meeting number two, or I'm sorry, three, to ensure that we had that prioritized list of those wants and needs. And coming out of meeting number three now, we've finished at Hazel Grove tonight. We've had nine buildings agree to their priorities. So those priorities will be ultimately presented to the district-level CFMP group on December 12th, as Dr. Shelton mentioned, and I'm excited for that meeting. I think it's gonna be a great meeting. So what came up at those building-level meetings? First of, you know, first of all, you can see there's a lot of alignment between what came up at the district level and what is coming up here at the buildings. I'm gonna try not to be too repetitive in what I say here, but the parking and bus routes, especially traffic flow through the facilities, in particular, in this space, is at several facilities where parking or bus drop-off or car rider drop-off might be very close to a street, trying to relocate that. That came up quite a bit. Gyms, ensuring especially at the elementary level that gym space is large enough. Additionally, where gyms serve as performance spaces, ensuring that the stage area is large enough. And then at the high school, ensuring that there's enough gym space overall, that the fieldhouse is large enough, et cetera. ADA compliance, again, that's very similar to what I said during the district-level themes, you know, looking at entrances and egresses and making sure that those are ADA compliant, additionally bathrooms as well. More classroom space and upgraded bathrooms. Storage space, especially in those classrooms, to get items that are in the hallways, out of the hallways. Kitchens and cafeterias, there's several elementary schools where the cafeterias could use a pretty big upgrade. Loading docks and making sure that each school has a loading dock and that it's large enough. Outdoor classroom space, and again, renovating any possible courtyard space, especially where courtyards might not have been used for a while. So, you know, those courtyards might not be as maintained as if they were being used, right? So, and then bringing them into use and possibly using them as outdoor classroom space and adding landscaping that makes it a more welcoming environment. Repairs and maintenance, HVAC repairs, air, you know, in addition to repairs, we're talking about also upgrading units and ensuring that any air quality issues or any places where there's been mold in the past are all upgraded, so that those issues are remediated. But also ensuring that, you know, where HVAC is running, especially in renovations, that the system is re-envisioned and not just the units are upgraded, right? So if you're changing the layout of the building, you're ensuring that you're envisioning the HVAC the right way. Roofing, cold compliance, plumbing, electric specifically for making sure that you've got enough outlets for the technology that we're talking about bringing into the classroom. Lighting, especially with regard to natural lighting, so making sure that corridors and libraries, et cetera, have enough natural lighting as well as in the classroom. Windows, ensuring that they're secure, that the appropriate classes in those windows, and that sightlines into the school, as well as out of the school, are appropriate. Gyms, again, I mentioned this, we've got repairs and maintenance also at gyms, potentially just, there was one school in particular where lighting was a concern, so replacing the lighting in a gym, et cetera. That's, you know, that also falls between repairs and maintenance and major renovations. Capital equipment, those HVAC upgrades I mentioned, weight room equipment, where there are weight rooms, ensuring that that's up to date, and also that the weight rooms are large enough and that they're well-equipped. Sensory room equipment, a lot of elementary schools have added sensory, a lot of schools have added sensory rooms over the last few years, making sure that those are well-equipped. And then flexible classroom equipment as well, to ensure collaborative learning. Again, we've got safety and security as that sort of overarching item that is a consideration for all of these buckets. So during our last discussion, we talked with the committee, the district-wide CFMP group, about three things that they've learned, two things that have been affirmed, and one question. There is a link here that will, I think, link to a PDF, so we'll make sure that that gets to the group, but it'll have all of the things that we've learned and affirmed in that one question. And I'll share a few quick thoughts that I jotted down on what the key themes were from that. Under three things, the group received a pretty thorough presentation on bonding capacity, so including how projects are funded and the strength of the district's financial position right now as we head into a long-range plan. That was really important and something that they all worked on very thoroughly during the last meeting. Similarity or consistency of needs across schools and buildings, particularly as it relates to infrastructure and future-ready learning spaces, and overall in comparison with the themes that they saw in the district-level survey. And then a few comments regarding the forward-looking stance of the district that were also balanced with some concerns around the cost of the maintenance of infrastructure needs as it relates to the overall bonding capacity. Two things that were affirmed, I'm gonna list three things, but technology upgrades should be a priority for future-ready learning. Commitment to high-quality buildings and continuous improvement for the school district overall. And then safety and security is a top concern across communities, and it means different things in different buildings. Questions, concerns about inflation and construction costs came up. Additionally, specific costs at each building and how to be most efficient. That'll be discussed in the next phase, now that we've decided what our priorities are. And then questions regarding expectations for the design phase and which will come into view as costs and funding capacity are determined, right? Each building's gonna have its own community engagement around the design of the facility and the improvements that go into it.
All right, next steps, we're gonna continue the process and gather information from all stakeholders, as well as other data points. We're gonna continue to work the process, collaborate, get feedback, give feedback. Architect meetings and cost estimates, you know, starting to think about that, starting to think about, and now that we're kind of putting together some lists, you know, the question's gonna be now, what's it gonna cost? And then comparing that cost with the amount of money that we estimate having available to do this work. Update the board in February or March about where we are in the process and continuing to work this process and come up and develop the CFMP. Citizens Advisory Council sometime in the spring or fall, and work with Dr. Buck and that timing. And then eventually, then eventually a recommendation to the board, probably next fall, as we start to gear up for something going, hopefully going to the voters in April of '25.
All right, any other questions from the board? Or comments? Board Member Murdock?
A couple of comments. Number one, with the 20-year bond cycle, what is the outlook and/or flexibility for the CFMP group? Plus then the CAC, who obviously will get a hold of this as well, to move buildings and/or projects between those five-year cycles?
Sure, you know, as I've mentioned in the past, as we think about things that are in the near future, kind of written in pen, and as we get a little bit further out, written in pencil, and then it's kind of doodling. And so, we don't know what it's gonna look like in 10 years. As a district, and we don't know what it's gonna look like in these buildings, there may be buildings and programs that need to be moved up earlier in the cycle. You know, if, you know, we think about a lot of the development that's coming into our district, are we gonna have to be building buildings, and you won't see, you see land purchases on the list, but you don't see new construction on the list. And we very well may be building some elementaries or middle schools and high schools as enrollment increases. So '25, pretty solid. '30, you know, there's some room for flexibility and change there. Of course, in '35 and '40, there's a lot of flexibility and change in those years.
So let me jump into just '25 here. We have a massive thing going to Miller Park right now, and on here, it's still listed again, right? So what's the second phase at Miller Park?
So currently, as we're working, it's a lot on the main building, still some accessibility.
On the other side, yeah.
Yes, that we're working on. There is a need for kind of a rethinking, really in that main building, about some sensory spaces, some learning spaces, how to really change that space to be more adaptable for the students that we're serving there, as well as the office space, it needs some rework as well. That's a lot of where the work, thinking, to be honest with you, as I listen, it feels more like putting the finishing touches on the work that we've started.
Okay, and that's fair. And then my other one with '25 that I'd be curious about is, what is UCM's involvement in Phase Four of MIC?
Sure. We have a wonderful relationship with UCM. And, Dr. Buck, help me, what year did we build MIC?
We opened it in 2016. We own the entire facility, and they do a lease purchase for their portion, and they're interested in doing the same process with us. They already are talking about programming they would like to have at MIC and the expansion. So we're already starting those talks with University of Central Missouri.
Currently, they pay about just under 60% proportion of the work and the operations of that facility. And so that's the number we're working with as we're moving forward, that's proportionally what they would pay about in regards to any construction, new build, or any work that we do there.
And then, that's good.
Can I, so we would pay for it all upfront, and they would make payments on their portion annually? It's how we did it in 2016.
Yeah, we have a reimbursement agreement with them, yeah.
Yes.
And then, the last thing I think that I probably would ask is, when we were talking to all of these groups, since we do get essentially a range number of what our bonding capacity is, what numbers are you using for those groups?
So as we've talked with, we haven't talked in terms of what a range is per building or per project.
Right, total, total, and that's what I want to.
Exactly. So the number that we've been given by Steeple is 200 million that we'd like we would have in bonding capacity. We know that we generate about 13 million a year in capital revenue through our normal sources that we have as a district. So over a five-year period of time, that's about 65 million. So you think about that five-year bond cycle, about 265 million between bond and then our typical capital funding sources. Now, interest rates, hopefully, we can use that to our advantage again, as we're doing now, with there being any premium available. You'd also then throw in UCM's support of that project, and so, but 265, 270 is kind of the number.
And Board Member Murdock, we'll get a bigger number than 200 million we could do, and that's be part of the question, do we do it then? Because that means less we could do in 2030. And if we have to build buildings in 2030, maybe we want to save some for that. So that's part of the give-and-go that both the board and CAC will get to wrestle with. I will also say, CAC and the board in the past, were very interested in doing Prop C full waiver at the same time as 2025 bond. So we'll have that conversation and see if the appetite is similar at that time.
There's somebody else sitting up here who's all for that.
All right, any other questions?
I just want to comment, looking forward, because Dr. Buck is right. You know, what we take in '25 and add the bonding capacity, that has a ripple effect in '30 and '35. So right now, we're projecting 200 million in '25, conservatively 190 in '30, 190 in '35.
I don't really have a question, but just a comment, just on the bonding capacity, but also the interest rates. I know when we had our 2020 bond, our interest rate was pretty low. Do you know what it was?
On the bonds we sold?
Yes.
You know, off the top of my head, I don't. You're right, it's a different environment. You're right, it's a different environment.
It's, it's, so what I'm getting at is just like the total cost for the district to do the same amount of bonding, I mean, it's more, not just because materials cost more, but because we're going to have to pay a higher interest rate for those bonds to be palatable to an investor to buy. So, another reason, I don't know what it's going to look like in 2025, but by the time we hit, when we're asking the voter for an approval, we're already probably backed out 12 months from that to knowing what we're at least asking for and being able to have a pretty firm idea of how much it's going to cost, so that once it's approved in 2025, we're hitting the ground, go, and try to get it done, right?
Right.
Is that kind of how, yeah, okay, so, we're already going to be kind of well on our way by that point, so.
Yep.
It's not really a question, but just, you know, for the board who's going to be here, it's just something to consider as we're looking at what we're, what we're trying to do with the amount of money that we're going to have and the total cost of the district, and being able to decide from there, what do we want to do now? Do we want to see what interest rates will do? Assuming that they're going to be where they are right now, which it's over 4%, pretty close to 5%. So, that's, I'm pretty sure that's significantly more than it was before, but Mr. Holder would probably have a better idea, as I put him on the spot over there. He's like, I don't know, maybe.
It's not, because we sold it premium, it's not, the true interest cost, it's definitely a good rate. The thing about the bond market is, it, it's high, for sure, but it's, I think these numbers were projected at 5%. Right now, you can go out for 20 years at 4%. The bonds will stay, historically, even in very high inflationary times, you can still get the bonds around that.
That's what I was going to say, the short-term rates are much higher than the long-term rates right now. But, but that is something we, we'll also have to see what the appetite of the world is at that time. We were able to sell, sell premium bonds at a high rate in 2020, and we don't know if that'll exist in 2025, if, if that's a preferred product and they're willing to pay premiums for it or not. So we'll, we'll know more as we get closer.
Right, I mean, it kind of depends on where your, for sure, income's coming from, right? Treasury bonds pay a higher interest rate, then these become less attractive because they're riskier, so, I mean, it just, we can't tell the future, it's just something for us as a board to keep in mind as we're kind of looking at where this process lands, but, yeah, that's, that's all I got. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I have a few. My first question is, when we're looking at slide number three, the 20-year bond cycle, are we reevaluating what this cycle looks like and where these schools are listed?
Yes, to, to Mr. Murdoch's point, always, always reevaluating. You know, say 25, it, as we went through the process, and this is probably in the last 12 to 18 months, was when we started identifying buildings with the highest need, what we believed to be the highest need based on work orders, based on, once again, building off of 18, 19, because some of these buildings were teed up for the 2020 bond, but then got delayed and put onto the 25 bond. So, this list was generated based on, for 25, based on need. 30, 35, and 40, once again, looking at, looking at age, looking at work orders, looking at just some of those factors, is how we built out 30, 35, and 40. But yes, as we approach, as we get through 25 and start thinking about 30, we'll take a look at this list and the entire list to say, is this the right list for 30? And is this the right list for 35? And is this the right list for 40?
Is there any way for you to provide to the board what this may have been five years ago, to, so that we can be able to view the changes that were...
CAC has a list, we could, I don't currently have it, but we can try to find it, of things that were queued up and didn't make the cut for the, for the 2020 bond.
Right, in 2019, in 2019, we had an extensive CAC, almost kind of final meeting to go through all of those recommendations, and I bet you, there was probably 20, 25% of the list ended up having to get kind of chopped off, and a couple of the buildings, obviously, in 2025 that are right there at the top, were the last couple things. I know Greenwood was a hot topic on going into the 2020. So, there is a list out there, and I probably actually even have it too, still stuck in my stuff.
And then Miller Park, for example, was cut off it, but then because of our premium bonds and our projects coming in, where there were, we added Miller Park back into the 2020 bond. So, when we went to voters, we didn't talk about Miller Park, we end up doing all the work we're doing there right now.
I just think that information is helpful for the board, because especially as we have possible turnover and things of that nature, then I think it's always helpful for that current board to be able to say, hey, this was slated, however, these things were removed, and so that we're not continuing to push in the same can down the road. And so I think being able to have that historical information, I think that's why that would be helpful.
So I'll be our third deliverable, and we'll put that deliverable in a board update in the future.
Yes, thank you.
And this is a question for any of my colleagues, who, who sits on the CFMP? Because I don't, I didn't see any board members listed as one of the committee members. Do we not have no board representation?
We, there, there's not a board member on the CFMP.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. My other question is, is when we looked at the survey that got sent out to the entire community, obviously, board members also was able to fill out that survey, how is that, is, is, when we're looking at slide, slide nine, is that where that information is being reflected?
Is this slide nine? Mine aren't numbered.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, that's slide nine.
Yes, that, this, this is exactly where this information came from. What we did, we clipped out all 3,000 comments from, well, there, there are 3,000 surveys, we clipped out all the comments from those surveys, and that's what that team did. They took these teams and they, they put it into buckets. What themes are you seeing in the comments? We did that in small groups, then we did it in other, larger groups, and then eventually we got to the entire, entire group, putting these all on the wall, and, and where the themes, where they saw the themes. And that's, that survey is where this information came from, with community conversation from that district-level committee.
So if I'm following the process clearly, I just want to make sure, so, we're taking the list of buildings that we're planning on that are slated for 2025, and then we're taking these themes, and we're applying it to those slated buildings that...
So...
Is that kind of how that looks?
So, I want, I want to think district level first, think, think district. The, the themes that the district-level team is working to develop is from that district-level survey. Their, their goal is to come up with, this is, this is the themes, these are the, this is the direction that the district wants to go. The building did, did that on a smaller level, at the building level. And now we're marrying what the building did with the district to make sure that it's all aligned. We want to make sure that we're all heading generally west, in the same direction, with the same goals, with the same outcomes.
Okay. I want to point out to board, the second deliverable, those two links have now been uploaded by, I assume, Ms. Ismert while we've been sitting here, so thank you to Ms. Ismert. So I'll take that deliverable off, because you have it delivered already in your board packet.
Appreciate that. Let's give her a hand too. Let's... All right, is, is there any other questions or comments? All right, thank you both.
Thank you.
Our last item in, in work session is item 2.02, personalized competency-based learning, PCBL, and so Dr. Barker's going to come up and do an activity, yes, there's going to be Play-Doh involved, and this will be a little pre-work, for those of you who can go to December 6 with us for a site visit at another district. So, Dr. Barker?
All right, so it's like seventh hour, and we've learned all day, and we're tired, but like, we have a fun teacher seventh hour, so it's going to be all right. We got a little more, we got a little more learning left in us, okay? We're going to do some inquiry-based learning around personalized competency-based learning, or PCBL. Essentially, he can have one if he wants, but he can't, and then, well, they can have one, but most of them have done the activity, so, everybody just needs one, doesn't matter what color. So personalized competency-based learning is the academic focus, the instructional work that we are engaging in as a district, wants you to have a concept of the work that our teachers are doing, and wants you to experience and understand the why. I say it's not what Google might tell you. If you Google competency-based education, you're going to find everything from it's the most amazing thing, it's a miracle, to this is the worst thing, it's the end of public education. And really, what I just want to say is, it's really important that because that extreme exists and what it is and how it's defined, I really want us to stay connected to the idea of personalized competency-based learning as we're utilizing it in the district and not what might be out there. And we're going to do so using an inquiry-based approach. Watch that time. John Hattie is a researcher who has done a meta-analysis of all sorts of research, basically, if there's a research study out there, at the time he was doing his meta-analysis, he looked at it, tried to find what was the most effective interventions in schools, what made the biggest difference, and a point four is a year's impact. Teacher clarity on what exactly they're supposed to be teaching, how in-depth they're supposed to be teaching, and how that is exemplified by student work, is a point seven-five effect. This is actually the statistic that I shared with the convocation speech, right? Clarity matters. And so this was, that was, that speech was designed to tee up this work with our staff. So, we've got Play-Doh, everybody's got a spot on your desk, right? Play-Doh's open? Okay, here's your task. You have four minutes, I'm going to have to grab my phone, you have four minutes. Right now, individually, use your Play-Doh to represent the word "community," each of you, okay? Four minutes, "community." Yeah, we're not reusing, I'm just, I get grossed out, we're not reusing, but I want to focus, 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 "community, community, community." You're at 2:45, you've got 2 minutes and 45 seconds left to build community with Play-Doh. And there's a grade, you're being graded, so do it well. Yeah, your grade point average is your, is your reward. All right, you've got 30 seconds to have a representation of community with the Play-Doh in front of you. All right, eight, seven, five, four, three, two, one, it's like chopped, you got to stop, put your hands up, okay? Grab a paper, because you're going to score yourself. Make sure your neighbor's not cheating, okay? If you have a structurally sound building in your design, give yourself a point. If you have multiple figures in your design, give yourself a point. If you have a representation of a job or an income source, give yourself a point. If you have transportation, give yourself a point. If your transportation is designed to operate on the ground, give yourself a point. Take your points, add them up and divide by five, because we're going to try to get our grades. Okay? All right. So, Dr. Herzog, in a high school, what's a passing grade? A 60% is a passing grade. How many of the board members passed this assignment? Oh, come on, you guys. 20% is our high, maybe? Somebody get, oh, you got a 60? Oh, he's a high flyer, all right, you got an 80, all right. Here, we're going to... Okay, okay, but, hold on, we're going to try it again. We're going to try it again. All right, here's the rules. This is what the learning target is. This is what the teacher is supposed to be teaching to be tightly aligned to our standard. A three is the target, you can't get to a four. Four is above and beyond, and it involves extension, we won't be able to get to a four today. So a three means a student will build a Play-Doh community that includes at least one structurally sound public building, multiple people and figures, at least one source of income or job represented, and at least one on-the-ground wheel-based form of transportation. So, let's try it again, you have four minutes, go. So we had four Fs and a B, so let's see if we can do better. I will say, pretty doesn't matter. They don't have to be pretty, they just have to be there. Walking... Walking needs to be, well, the charge is a on-ground wheel-based form of transportation. I mean, I guess if you had the wheelie shoes, you could count that, but. Might have just dated ourselves there. 50 seconds. No? Nuh-uh, just pointing you back to the proficiency scale. 25 seconds left. All right, you've got 10 seconds left. Okay, time. All right. Now normally I would do a collaboration in which you would tell your partner what you've got. But in the interest of time, re-score yourself. That's a little good faith. Keep your, keep your partner honest. Look at the scoring guide and here, here we are again. Here's our scoring guide. If you have a structurally sound building, give yourself a point. If you have multiple figures, give yourself a point. If you have representation of a job or an income source, give yourself a point. If you have transportation, give yourself a point. And if your transportation is designed to operate on the ground, give yourself a point and then do your division. So where are we at now, folks? As, we went from Fs and a B to As and Bs. All right, time, time is still a factor for some of us, okay? All right, what's the difference between the two activities? Clarity, right? Now, in a classroom, is the first activity valuable? Of course, critical thinking, kids are engaged. The first activity is a valuable lesson, right? The second activity is a valuable lesson with clarity on exactly what the learning target is supposed to be and what exemplar work should look like, right? So if we tell our teachers in our curriculum that their, their unit or their target is community. And we have a hundred teachers who are supposed to teach community. It may look like the first version in some teachers' classrooms and the second version in others, right? So we owe it to our teachers to have structures in place for clarity around prioritized standards and the ability to know what exactly is a three. What does it look and feel like so that our students have the same clarity? So that's the work of personalized competency based learning this year, okay? We're going to talk a little bit about what guides this work. This is guided by Marzano's work in proficiency scales. A proficiency scale, this could be a whole day training. We're going to do it in like two minutes, right? Proficiency scale outlines a progression of learning. It is not a scoring guide. A four is not a really great community and a one is not a really poor community. It looks like this. A three is the target. Mastery of the learning target is a three. Extension and enrichment of a learning target is a four. The foundational skills it takes to get to the mastery is a two, so that's vocabulary. And then a one is, is what it looks like with partial success. So examples, it looks like this. 3.0, the student will, there's your very clear learning target. That's the expectation is a three. 2.0, in order to do a three, they have to understand all of this vocabulary and have these fundamental skills that lead up to it. 1.0, they need a lot of support to even get there. 4.0, extension and enrichment. Okay? So proficiency scales and rubrics or scoring grades are not the same thing. A proficiency scale says what is the learning that is expected? What is mastery? And what is the progression of skills to get to that mastery? What vocabulary is needed? What prerequisite skills are needed, okay? A scoring guide is how well did you do on it? Like you did really well, you've got an A or you've got a five and you did a little less well, you got a four. They're not the same thing and that's going to be a task for our teachers to understand the difference. So we're going to make a quick Cobb salad proficiency scale. I was going to do it on the poster, but let's just do it, do it out here, okay? If you're going to make a Cobb salad and that's your target, what is the three? So I'm going to go back to, you guys can know what a Cobb salad looks like now. What is a three, okay? The student will be able to make a Cobb salad. There's your three. Clearly defined learning target. Is a two a poorly made Cobb salad? It is not. That is how we think about rubrics. What's a two? Two is the vocabulary and skills necessary to make a Cobb salad. So what goes on a two here? I'll give you one. Cutting vegetables. Knowing the ingredients. Food safety. Proportions, measurement, right? These are foundational skills that a student has to master at a two level before they can get to a three. So is it possible for a teacher to say to a class, guys, we're going to work on a two level skill today? And even if you mastered at 100%, you still aren't at a three. You haven't mastered the course because we're only doing a two level activity, right? And we're doing the two level activity today because in the next couple of days, we're going to give you the three level activities. And that's where you're really going to show your mastery, right? But we have to tell our teachers, what is a two? What is a three? We have to be very overt with what that is. So that's the work that we're doing right now, okay? That was the fastest proficiency scaled Cobb salad development we've done in any of the trainings. So then here's the big core question that starts to worry people. Are we talking about changing grades and grading scales? No. This causes anxiety. This is not a change in grading. We are not talking about getting rid of grades. We are talking about creating instructional clarity for teachers. You can still sign an A or a B or a 20% or a 60% or an M or a P or any. We're talking about the data that feeds those decisions for now. Now, four, five, six, seven years down the road, might this start to have teachers start to go, you know, it doesn't make a ton of sense to be used on a traditional grading system. Maybe, but we're not doing that now, okay? Back to the, don't Google it. Because if you Google it, people will say they're throwing away grades, they're turning, you know. This is about clarity for teachers and students, okay? All right. What is our timeline for this? This is ugly and was part of a grant we submitted. We have a $200,000 grant request in with Desi to help pay for this work. Um, essentially, we've got this work divided into professional learning. Uh, we did a lot of professional learning in-house last year. This year, we've taken lots of building leaders, district leaders and curriculum teams to see what I say are the extreme versions of this. So this is, as I've mentioned, there's a zero to 10 on this, right? We're taking people to see the 10s, 11s and 12s so that we can think about becoming a one or a two in this work, okay? So we're really taking them to places that have been doing this for a very long time. It was somewhere and they said, don't let somebody's chapter 20. Don't try to make your chapter two what somebody else's chapter 20 is. So we're going to look to see what chapter 20 is so we can think about what our chapter two is in this work, okay? When we think back to what this actually looks in practicality, so what are we really doing? And much credit to Dr. Janeway, this is her PowerPoint. She didn't even know I stole it from her. When we think about what does the actual work look and feel like this year? The why is so that we can have a guaranteed and viable curriculum that no matter which algebra classroom you walk in, you get the same algebra. No matter what third grade, third grade science classroom you walk into, you get the same third grade science. Teachers have the autonomy to craft beautiful lessons, but we understand that our curriculum and our assessments are aligned. What, what is the work? It's a two-year process. We're going to start this year with prioritizing standards. You can't do this, you can't, you can't make a proficiency scale for every single learning target that's out there, right? So first we have to start grouping them and saying which ones are the most important, which ones are the musts and which ones are the mayes. So we're working on musts and mayes. And then year two, we're going to work on those proficiency scales. So how do we figure out what the musts are and what the mayes are? We start to get groups of teachers together to talk about, okay, the sweet spot between what is needed in school life and on the test. Those become the musts, right? The things that are maybe in the circles that aren't right where the star is, but are closer to the center, those are the mayes. And then there's some nice to know standards out there that we make sure everyone has exposure to, but probably wouldn't be, um, the end of all things if a, if a Kedham made it outside the class without one of the nice to know things. We're going to work through unit design and scope and sequence so our teachers have very clear expectations of what a unit based on prioritization scales looks like, what exemplar work looks like, what a two, what a three, what a four looks like. And then we're going to move into proficiency scales, eventually into common assessment. So this is the plan. This year, we have our K-12 ELA, English and Math. Art is beginning some preliminary, preliminary work that may spill into next year. Modern Language and Chemistry. This year, they are working on identifying the musts. They are prioritizing the standards. They are deciding what has to happen in each course. And they're working on unit design and scope and sequence. And then next year, that same group of teachers is going to develop those proficiency scales around those. So they are, we're going to identify what the what is. And then next year, the Cobb salad activity we just did, they're going to do it for every single one of those prioritized standards, including examples of student work. So teachers know exactly what it's supposed to look and feel like in each class. And then we're going to do phase two where we start the process over again with science, social studies and the other electives with, with standards and we'll stagger the work. Who's involved? The prioritization of the work at the K-5 level, we have invited representatives to serve on most teams. Teachers are doing it, but they are select teachers who are coming to serve on smaller group teams so that there's some agility. At the secondary level, every single teacher who teaches algebra was invited to the algebra prioritization meeting. Every single teacher who teaches biology was invited to the biology meeting. This is 100% designed to be teacher driven so that they help us select what the musts are and then help us drive the decisions. So when we think to the larger conversation, I know there are some potential visits of schools in the area, um, upcoming schools. There's all sorts of ways this can look. It can look like, I said, the chapter 20 in a micro school. It can look like chapter 20 in a, in a specific targeted school like we might visit, um, in Liberty. They've got an epic where they work through this. But it can look like that at the most extreme level on a small scale, while in every classroom being anchored to the clarity that is provided when you know which version of community you're supposed to be teaching and what a three really looks and feels like. So that's the philosophical groundwork behind the work, the timeline of the work and the, and the way we're tackling the work. Um, and as, and as upbridge as I could during seventh hour. So, um, I'm open up, open to questions, but we wanted to give you that framework for learning before we began visiting other school districts.
And so just let you know, they've gone out to Westminster in Colorado, to Kedham Rain up in Wisconsin. Um, so this, those are the things that are, they're just, they are, been doing this for a long time. We're not asking to be Kedham Rain or Westminster because we couldn't do it in a short period of time. We're, December 6th, we're going to go to Liberty. So there's two school districts that have an elementary school of choice that is totally based on this kind of concept, competency based learning. And one of them is Mosaic in Melville School District and the other one's Epic in Liberty. So we're going to visit Epic. We might also get to visit their alternative school, which does very similar things to us. They call it unschooling, uh, and it's a homeschool concept too, if you can look up unschooling. But then they also have micro schools and high schools. There's many districts in, in the state that have micro schools. So there's, Liberty has one in each high school. We're probably going to go Liberty High. And their micro schools are different in both high schools. We have one of our high schools that's looking, uh, has looked at this in the past and has considered looking at it again. And it's like, basically a school is a school. And when you visit kids, I remember being at Melville High School, um, last year and talking to kids while they're in it. They know the proficiency scales. They can tell you what they've mastered, what they're working on mastering. And there's flexibility. There's times when they're a group of five teachers, they, they know they got to go here because I, I don't know how to do this yet. There's other times where I just need to check in. And every week they have certain different, um, standards they're trying to master and they can articulate where they're at in their learning. They know they're learning more than most because the, the focus is on their proficiency skills. Last thing I'll add, and Dr. Barker can tell you this, that we have some of this throughout the district already in pockets. And some of Tech Academy is a good example. And we still have grades. So some of Tech Academy does competency based learning, but they still have grades. So I just want to make that clarity. We already have some competency based learning going on and we still have grades. So that's the one thing she's talking about when you Google. Sometimes people say it's one or the other. It is not. Uh, and we've been doing some of Tech Academy for a very long time.
If there was a word, I would hope that would be the takeaway beyond just kind of understanding the work that's happening. It's the idea of clarity, right? The teachers are clear on exactly what the standards are. The students are clear exactly what the learning is. It feels much better to be able to say, instead of I've got a 70% or a 30% on the community assessment or the algebra test, to be able to say, you know what, I only have an 80%, but that's because the one learning target that I was only at was I didn't make a wheel-based transportation, keeping the analogy out, right? You can specify the learning target in which you are still working on mastery as opposed to kind of chasing points. So big, big, big dreams and hopes, but we're going to start first with clarity, clarity, um, and, and prioritization. Questions? All right, Play-Doh is yours to keep.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our work session. Uh, let's go upstairs for a closed session.